It is 5:35. Thank you all for being patient. We are going to now call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, April 25th, 2024. We have one commissioner that is on his way, but he will be here. But go ahead and please call the roll.
Mindy Payne?
Here.
Jason Cohen?
Jonathan Townsend?
Here.
Robert Goransson?
Here.
Jaylee Klimpa?
Here. Item number three, old business. We have none. Item number four is consideration of the consent agenda. The way the consent agenda works is all items on the consent agenda are taken in one motion, one second, and then voted upon. Commissioners, does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Not me.
Okay, so seeing that there are no items that wish to be, that anybody wishes to pull from the consent agenda, and we have nobody that has signed up, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so may I have a motion and a second?
Please approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. As per staff recommendation, please call the roll.
Mindy Payne, yes. Jonathan Townsend?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes.
Jaylee Klimpa?
And we will pause one moment.
For the minutes, we will note that Jason Cohen has joined the meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
My apologies.
No problem. We understand traffic. Alrighty, item five, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item six, public hearings. Please read item 6A.
Item 6A is public hearing, consideration and possible action regarding BAZ 1411-2024, the Luth Residence. This is approximately 9.63 acres, zoned A1 to RS4, single-family residential, located one quarter mile east of South Lynn Lane Road and south of West Florence Street. This property is currently unplatted. The current use of the property is single-family residential. The comprehensive plan is Level 2, which does allow rezoning to RS4. The reason the property owner is requesting RS4 is because they are intending to apply for a lot split on the property that would create a flag lot, as shown on the exhibit. The surrounding land uses and comprehensive plan is in your staff report. According to the FEMA maps, none of the properties located on the 100-year flood plain, water and sanitary sewer is available with the city of Broken Arrow. Based upon the comprehensive plan, the location of the property, and the surrounding land uses, staff recommends that BAZ 1411-2024 be approved and that plating be waived.
Thank you, Henry. Any questions of staff commissioners?
I don't really have que-- well, I guess I do. Just clarification, I guess what they're wanting to rezone from the A1 to RS4, and the reason being for the, because they're going to do the lot split, and if they were to do the lot split, it would have been less than the five acres or the 330 feet frontage. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. One of their lots would be reduced to the 55-foot frontage, which is the minimum in RS4.
Okay.
Assuming this gets approved.
Right. But I mean, that's, that was the driving force to get it to that. Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Thanks for the confirmation. It says here that the applicant is in agreement and will not be attending, so I will not call, well, I will open it up to see if the applicant is here and wishes to speak. Nope. Okay, did we have anybody sign up for this item?
We did not.
Okay, and no emails, no phone calls?
No.
Okay. Alright, so the public hearing on this item is closed. Any further discussion, recommendation, recommendations, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6A per staff recommendations.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second per staff recommendation for approval on this item. Please call the roll.
Sorry, I forgot to update the attendance.
I guess one other thing I might add before we have the roll call vote. The, I don't have a problem with going with the RS4, and I understand going to the residential for the size of the lot, the lots, but, but they're not forced to come into lots, but that's just what they're, that was their plan right now. That could actually change, right, on the lot split.
Right. They, to my knowledge, they have not submitted a lot split application yet.
The exhibit shows that, though.
Yeah, they had legal descriptions drawn up, and we had talked about it, but I don't think they've submitted the application. If they decided not to, they could keep the single house, the zone at RS4. There would be no issue with that. It's just if they needed a lot split to get that other parcel.
I just didn't want to mislead anybody else who might be interested in this, thinking there's definitely going to be a lot split, because they could actually decide not to do the lot split, once they get the rezoning, so, okay.
Okay, so for confirmation, again, we have a motion and a second per staff recommendation to approve this item. Please call the roll.
Mindy Payne?
No.
Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Jonathan Townsend?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes.
Jaylee Klimpa?
Yes, and this item will go before City Council on May 21st in this, this room right here. Item 6B, 24-556.
Yes, item 6B is comprehensive plan request 1404-2024. This is a request to change the comprehensive plan designation from Levels 2, 4, and 6 to Levels 3 and 4 on approximately 11 and 1/2 acres, located approximately south and east of the southeast corner of Omaha Street and Aspen Avenue. The property is presently undeveloped and unplatted. The applicant is interested in developing the property for commercial and single-family uses. Pending approval of this amendment to the comprehensive plan, the applicant intends to submit a rezoning request to change the zoning on the property to commercial, general, and single-family residential. At this time, the applicant has not provided any kind of draft PUD amendment for this development. Amending the comprehensive plan to Levels 3 and 4 could potentially support a future rezoning to any district identified as possible or allowed within the comprehensive plan level. The table of the land use intensity system is identified in your staff report and identifies these potential districts. For those in the audience, RS, or sorry, Level 2, 3, sorry, Level 3 identifies as possible R2, RS2, RS3, and R4, RD, and RM multifamily. Level 4 would support possibly RM, residential multifamily, neighborhood commercial, or mixed-use commercial, office neighborhood, commercial neighborhood, and commercial general. On March 26th, 2024, Nathan Cross, the attorney for BC Land Holdings Company, sent an informational letter to surrounding residents with information pertaining to this upcoming application for a comprehensive plan amendment. I did receive a phone call this afternoon with a concern from a resident that the signs had not been posted properly. I did confirm with our sign shop that posted the sign. They provided a photograph showing it was posted. We also drove out to the site. There were two signs posted. One had fallen down, so we put that back up due to the wind, but the one on Aspen Avenue was still standing. So just to clarify that. So based on the location of the property and surrounding land uses, staff is recommending that comp 1404-2024 be approved, subject to the property being plotted. The applicant is present to answer any questions, and I'm available as well.
Alrighty, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yes, was the phone call, or you said it was a call about the sign, was that reported today, saying that that was noticed today? Or were they, were they reporting today saying they noticed it days ago?
He wasn't sure when he, he said he'd seen it today. He wasn't sure when he had seen it or not seen it. That's one of the reasons we have multiple signs posted. In case one does go down, we are required to have one, but we typically post two, just in case something happens like that. But it was out there, it was posted.
When you, okay.
Any further questions of staff?
I might as well ask this. The applicant might talk about it, I'm not sure, but I remember we had this piece of property coming up before, and I think it was, was it a year and a half ago, maybe? And I don't remember, I was wondering if you could, I didn't see it in Stanford report, but I was wondering if you could kind of compare what was asked the last time with this one. And, because I know, I think we approved it in the Planning Commission, it went on to City Council, but they denied it, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
But I was just wondering, what's the difference between now and the last one we heard, if you knew where I'm from?
I'll let Mr. Cross answer in more detail, but generally speaking, the proposal last time included a draft PUD, which did show multifamily residential, whereas this development does not have a draft PUD, but the intent of the applicant is single-family, although a comprehensive plan supports multiple districts. But if this comp plan amendment were approved, the applicant won't have to come forward with any rezoning application, whether that be for single-family, multifamily, or commercial.
So are the levels they're asking for now the same levels that were before?
Yes.
And I remember they had the apartment complex, and people didn't want to look at the apartment complex.
I can address that, Mr. Commissioner. Good evening, Commissioners, Nathan Cross, 2 West Second Street, Suite 600 Tulsa. What you're seeing on the screen, just to get to the heart of Commissioner Goransson's question, that's what we requested previously. And the, the major distinction, and I hate to make you jump through a bunch of hoops, Jason, but can you go back?
This is the previous one?
That's the previous. So you see it's Level 3, all the way back, and commercial in the front. Can you show the current request?
I think there's an exhibit of the current.
Yeah, there is.
There it is.
Right there.
There it is.
Yeah. So the current request, you'll note that that big piece to the, to the, I guess it's the west, maybe? If I'm orienting right, I'm not sure.
The purple?
The purple, is, is no longer part of this. We sold that, my client, we, my client sold that to the church, which is next door, and so that's no longer their land. It's not part of the development plan. Their request has been revised to include that little street frontage piece down there at the bottom that's red, which is the little box over there to the right, at the bottom, right there. And then the kind of swath back through there remains Level 3. Now, normally, this body would see a trailing PUD that's part of this process. And the reason you're not here is, is because there's a couple of things at play. One, this is part of the large Battle Creek PUD, and it's been amended a bajillion times. In fact, I personally have been a part of probably five amendments of the thing, and we're on Amendment Double Z or something at this point. But, but also, and so that's getting more complicated as we go, but also, with the new code that's coming down the line, we can accomplish this, the, the use that we've, that we have here, that we've been fully transparent with staff about, through a straight rezoning. And so the goal here is, is to do this through a straight rezoning, which, you know, I've talked to some of the neighbors out in the hallway, and we had a very good conversation. I've explained that, you know, this process doesn't take anything away from the public hearing process. We've still got to come back with a zoning application, and we've still got to have this same discussion in this room over the zoning piece, and we've still got to go to City Council. But we're trying to, to, to marry this up, maybe, with the new zoning code changes, and accomplish this through a straight rezone. Now, I'm going to, again, make you tap me, sorry. We've been, as I said, fully transparent with staff throughout the, I say "we," it's been my client. I haven't been in those meetings, but, but there was a pre-development meeting where we discussed this. We showed this plan. I've showed this plan to the neighbors, and I'm going to share it with them via email after this meeting. But this is the concept, right here, that you're seeing on the screen. And so as part of this discussion, for even this step, we've gone in and showed this much information, as, as evidence of what we're intending to do, fully aware that if we don't show back up with a zoning request that matches this, that everybody in the room's going to say, "Well, this is not what you told us the last go-round," because we're willing to, to be married to this. And that's just to orient you, that's commercial. If you'll turn it, if you can get it on the screen, turn it the way that was, where it would match up with the very, very thick. So that's commercial down on the bottom, and then those are single-family lots. They're smaller lot houses, but they're single-family houses, villa-style houses there in the back. And I, again, I've shared this with the neighbors. I think, I won't speak for them, I think they're in support of this concept, particularly as it relates to the previous concept of apartments in here. But we think it, it presents a nice buffer between the neighborhood and the hard-corner commercial, which everybody wants to preserve for, you know, not only for commercial use in Broken Arrow, but also for sales tax purposes. So we're in support of staff's recommendation. I'll take any questions you might have.
See, I understand where you're coming from, and I'm just trying to figure out where, at what point did the council decide, you know, we don't care?
Yeah, I'll tell you.
And, and the comprehensive plan, what you're wanting to go, the Level 3 you're asking for, Level, yes, Level 3 is the same as what was presented before, correct?
Yeah.
That's, okay, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, this body passed, they might agree with me when I say this, which is rare, that, that the last request was more aggressive than this request.
Yes, I agree.
As it relates to the impact on their neighborhood.
Right.
And so what I'm asking for today is, is less than what we, we passed last time.
But as long as everybody understands that the same is the Level 3, even though this is not a PUD, it's comp plan change, even, what falls in Level 3 is the multi-residential, RS4, et cetera, et cetera.
Absolutely.
As long as everybody knows that.
Absolutely.
So, like you said, you come back in for the zoning change, and that's where it's different, right, from what came before us first time and the second time?
Right.
And as I said, I've shared, I'm going to share that with them, and if I come back with something different, I'm not going to, I'm telling you, because I'm not going to, I'm not going to stand up here and say that, and then come back with something different. I'm only trying to help you to-- Find somebody else.
I'm trying to help you that if it was approved tonight, and I'm not saying it's going to be, but if it was approved tonight, you just better be ready to talk to the City Council, what the difference between now and the first application that got denied.
I'm, I'm, I am well aware of that, and I appreciate it, but I'm comfortable enough, we're comfortable enough sharing more detail than we would normally share at this stage with the public at large, and saying, "We're willing for you to come back and throw this in our face if this is not what you see--
Right.
--the next go-round."
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Alright, we have a couple of people that have at least signed in to speak, or?
Yes, we have two people that would like to speak.
Okay, did we get any emails in on this item, or phone calls?
We did not.
Okay, so--
Just the phone, the phone call I got today was concerning the sign. He also had some concerns about the traffic, similar things. I let him know he could email in an official comment, but I did not receive one.
Okay, thank you. I'll let you go ahead and read those names.
Sure. So first up, we have Robert Fox. He would like to speak in opposition.
And if you could, just speak, you know, just state your name, and then you will have three minutes.
Alright, thank you. My name is Robert Fox. And you want my address, too?
No, you don't need to.
Robert Fox. To answer your question, the sign was down, so it was down for a couple of days on the ground.
Okay, was that the one on Aspen, or the one on Omaha?
Yes, on Aspen. It was down.
Okay.
Thought that was unusual. I don't think it was wind, because you guys put those in, put those in there pretty, pretty hard.
You'd be surprised how not--
Yeah, but I don't know.
--low on the ground they are.
I wasn't in it, but I saw it, and then it came up later on. You guys are whoever propped it up on the telephone pole, and I was like, "Okay, that won't stand very long," but here and now.
So you saw it up originally, then it was down, and then you saw it back up?
And then it was down.
So you saw it originally up, okay.
Couple days later, then it was down, and then it was back up. The other one on the other side on 51st Street stayed up the entire time.
Okay.
Just for your own info. So to answer your question, on the part of, I'm going to try to be fast on this, is that yes, there was apartments that were being built on that entire time, and the committee, the council committee, I believe, council, they decided that the traffic was too heavy on 51st Street, and the traffic was a big issue on Aspen and 51st Street for both. And they said until that street gets built, that they would hold off on doing anything on this piece of property. The lawyer, if I may use that, he withdrew, he withdrew his application, and that was the end of the story. So we're still back to the same question of his traffic. And you noticed if, if you were out there, that they built a coffee shop on the corner?
Mm-hmm.
So that increases traffic. And there is no widening of that traffic light. So it's still one lane there, both ways, and a turning lane. There's no left lane to turn. There's nothing there at all. So you still have a really tight impact of traffic right there. Okay. On that, so, just so you know, for the record, that while they did, they said no about the traffic, we did have Fox News and Channel 6 here, just in case you guys forgot about it. I don't think you did. But, and they recorded all that, too, plus your own documentation on the traffic part. I do want to find it interesting that, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be wrong, and I can apologize on that part, but there's a, on the BBC Land Holding Company, I'm assuming it's owned, last time I looked at it, because we don't know who owns it or runs it, and I guess in 2021, we look at Tulsa, and I look at 2022, the address is the same as now Owasso Land Trust LLC, and David Charney is the chair of this. Guess you guys all know this?
Yes.
Outstanding. So I like how no one's talking about the name. So he has Owasso Land Company Trust, Capital Home Residence Group Trust, Simpson Homes is tied to him. And by the way, he sits on the Owasso Development Authority and Tulsa County Board Adjustment. I assume all you guys know that?
Yes.
So I guess we're, we yield to the Owasso Group. So I notice that you guys say "yes" a lot. So it's like a yes. So to me, excuse the phrase, but you're lap, you're just dogs that lick the boot, of these guys. So I hate to say it, but if you're saying "yes" all the time--
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Think about what you said, because I already said "no" once.
Alright, next up, we have Mr. Ron Gradup. I apologize if I say that wrong. I'm sure I did.
Hello, Council. My name is Ron Gradup. I'm the president of the Shiloh HOA, which is the home, the neighborhood closest to this. I'm also the chair of a group called the Battle Creek HOA Leadership Council, which is made up of the presidents of the Battle Creek HOAs, Shiloh, Magnolia Gardens, Shenandoah Valley, Reflection Ridge, the Reserve, Gettysburg, and Wakefield Heights. So I'm here actually representing all seven of those neighborhoods. And basically, Nathan answered the question we had, and it goes kind of to what you say. When we were here before, and they were asking for Level 3, that included apartments. This time, they have a plan for single-family homes, which we support that. We just wanted to make sure that after it changed to Level 3, and when he said they were married to this plan, that was pretty much just what we wanted to accomplish, that we wanted to go on record and say, "We're great with the plan they're submitting. We just want to be sure that when it actually changes to Level 3, that we don't get blindsided." So the Battle Creek HOAs support the current plan, and if he's married to that, we don't have a problem. If he, like you said, if, if they do try to change at this point, we'll be back before the City Council again. But I'm convinced of that. So again, that's really all we wanted to do, was go on record and say, "We're good with where they are. We just want to make sure it doesn't change."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and that's the reason why I wanted to make sure that, you know, they're asking for Level 3. You realize there's other things that could fall under Level 3. I just want to make sure--
Well, that was it. Because Level 3 does include apartments, even though that's not--
Right.
--what they're saying. That's why we just wanted to go on record and say, "Yeah, once it changes to Level 3, we want to make sure it doesn't go back."
But if it's approved tonight, we're approving the, we would approve the comprehensive plan, and Level 3 actually has different--
Yes, and we would have to go back before the City Council again.
But like he said, they would have to come back before us and ask for the rezoning request, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
But we understand and appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, if the applicant were to come back and ask for a multifamily zoning, that would require a quarter-mile radius, which is significantly larger than tonight. So if that were to be the case, all those notifications would have to go out. Staff has had pre-development meetings with the applicant and your engineers, and this is the same concept that we've seen on the staff side.
Right.
And if, if and when a rezoning case were to come forward, it would have to come before this body and City Council again, with all notifications required.
Thank you. Okay. Any, before the applicant starts speaking, anything else?
There was no others.
No, I don't think there are any others.
Nope.
Okay.
I don't have anything else--
Okay.
--other than to ask if you have any questions based on comments you've heard.
Okay.
The last time they came, they said apartments. Can you tell me how many units you were thinking about at that time, and how much is in this one?
The lot, I'm not sure if the lot counts on--
It was a lot.
The apartment is, I think, in the neighborhood of 400, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the lots here is significantly less than that. It's, I'm sorry, I should have this ready. I don't have it on, I mean, I can, I can count it, but it's probab, I would say it's probably--
Twenty-five-ish?
Four, yeah, I mean, it's--
Maybe a little more.
It might be 30?
I was going to say like 30-ish.
Yeah, it's--
It's quite a bit less--
It's less than, and I'll, and I'll tell you--
Almost 10 times is less.
Because I went here last time, so that's why I have all these questions.
Yeah, almost 10 times is less.
So the traffic and stuff--
Well--
--would be a lot less?
I, I will tell you on that point, and, and to answer your question, the traffic is less, yes, than the last concept.
Okay.
We were here, and I'm, I'm getting to your answer, so indulge me for a second--
Okay.
Please. The, we were, we were here two years ago, okay? We put, we, I say "we," I'm, I'm speaking for my client. They put a lot of money and thought and time into this. We went through this process. We went through the PUD process. We, as Mr. Fox said, we pulled the PUD because it didn't look good at the City Council level, and that was the main issue that was raised. So when this concept of development, this came back, the first place that my client went was Mr. Schwab's office and talked about traffic at this intersection. And there is a plan to widen this, this intersection. We've talked about it. I invite you to ask city staff about that concept, but that's been part of this discussion in, in concert with what we're, we're describing today. And so I guess the short way I would say that is, we learned our lesson last go-round. My client owns this property, wants to develop it, wants to bring quality housing and, and good commercial to the city of Broken Arrow. That's what they're in the business of doing. And so that's all been part of the conversation.
When you, when you spoke the first time, you spoke, you said you didn't want to speak for the neighbors, but you felt that generally they were pretty favorable, given the modifications that you've approached, that you and your client have approached this project with this time around. As evidence of your feelings, at least, have you been in contact with, like, the gentleman and his HOA president, who spoke here today, and groups like his, to an extent to, just, is that, is that why you felt confident enough to say that, and what have some of those experiences and information gatherings been like this time around?
Well, so, I'll answer your question this way. I send a letter with, whenever I do a rezoning, I mean, this is not my first rodeo. This body's seen me before a number of times, I think.
Right.
I send a letter to everybody that gets a, that gets notice, and I invite them to call me, or email me, or whatever they want to do, and, and talk about it individually. I've been doing this for 15 years. I've done a lot of neighborhood meetings. They tend to turn into, they don't turn into yelling matches, but they, they don't, they're not an effective way for everybody to, to ask questions, in my opinion. And so I ask for people to call me, and let's just have a one-on-one conversation. I didn't get any feedback on that letter, this go-round, which I normally do, but these folks showed up, and with the exception of Mr. Fox, I spoke with three of them in the hallway, and that's where we had this conversation that I referenced in my earlier comments, where I said, effectively, what I told you all, which is, "I've got a plan here that we've, you know, we've been through this. My clients spent a lot of money and time on this. They're, they don't want to go back and have this thing false start again. And so we are trying to be as transparent as possible with everybody involved in this process, neighbors included, about what we're intending to do." And that's where my previous comments came from, was a conversation that we had out in the hall pre, prior to this meeting. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't know if it's out of bounds or not, but he spoke about some of his interactions with city staff in widening, possible widening of the street. Is that something city staff is able to speak on, or is that not, is that for another time, another place?
No, he's correct. There are plans in the future to widen that intersection, and as part of the proposed 2026 Obligation Bond Package, one of the projects will be to widen Omaha Street from Aspen to Elm.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that.
And I, I just happen to be privy. 51st Street is also being widened from 166 to 177th, then from 177th to 193rd, with a roundabout at 193rd, all by Tulsa County. with a roundabout at 193rd, all by Tulsa County. Some of it is your vision funding progress as promised.
And I, I'll add just as a note, uh, when we do rezonings, um, they're subject to plotting. So yes, we're talking, you know, a few years out on road construction, but there's also a few years before you start seeing houses go up here. Um, there's full engineering review, plotting phases, more city council meetings, a lot of things that need to happen. So, um, this is one step out of many. Um, so it's not like if, if this is recommended for approval tonight and ultimately approved by city council, you're not going to see houses go up in two, three, six months even. It's going to be a process.
And just to be clear, 51st Street widening will have to go to the vote of the people.
Okay. Okay, any further questions of the applicant?
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we are now going to close the public hearing on this item. Any further discussion, remarks, recommendations, motions?
No, the only question I have, I guess, for staff is, you know, I know that you're, you're right, the traffic was a big issue. I think even the city manager mentioned that at the council meeting. But so when this application came for the city, did, did they actually, I guess y'all had a TAC meeting on it with the, with the engineering department too, look at all that traffic and all that?
It would not go through TAC until we get to the plotting and engineering phase of things.
I wasn't sure when it came.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, but through the engineering, if the traffic count supported, um, we would require a traffic study at that time, um, which could include, uh, acceleration and deceleration lanes, just kind of depending on the traffic that's generated by the development.
Right. And we are recommending bodies, so if it was approved, go to the city council and if they have the issue with the traffic, they can decide what they want to do with it, so. Which is what happened last time.
Anything else? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
All right, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item B, 6B, 2455-6, per staff recommendation.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, per staff recommendation for item 6B. Please call the roll.
Mindy Payne? Yes. Jason Cohen?
Yes.
Jonathan Townsend?
Yes.
Robert Goransson?
Yes.
Jay Lee Clempe?
Yes. This item will go before city council. So Mr. Fox, if you would like to speak in front of the city council, please fill out a form. It is on May 21st, 2024. Item number seven, appeals. We have none. Item number eight, general commission business.
We have none.
We have none from staff?
Actually, maybe it never, I'll do it on the next one.
Okay. Item number nine, remarks, inquiries and comments by planning commission and staff.
Um, the first meeting in, uh, May. Um, we will be appointing new vice, chair and vice chair for the planning commission. So just to put that on your radar, that'll be on the agenda next week, not next week, two weeks from now.
Two weeks, yeah. Thank you. Anything else?
I would like to say something and, and Graham might want to get close to the mic just to shut me off if I go too far. He's ready. I just wanted to say that I noticed we had an item on the agenda tonight that we did, you know, it was for the RS four. And there was nobody here in opposition for it, but it was real close to the item that we've heard before, real close to the middle school. And that's just one of the items that we talked about, the big area. I just, it was kind of strange, nobody came in opposition on that compared to the other one. So that tells me something, but anyway.
I figured somebody would come speak. I don't know.
Uh, just kind of tells me what the real concern is.
Yeah.
Not so much at the school, but anyway.
Right.
I know.
I'm done.
And just to say, we don't always say yes to everything.
No, we don't.
That's true, I know. I don't think I've ever licked the boot either, so.
I don't think I have either.
It was to say, like, I, I said no to the first one, so.
I don't understand what it matters who the owner of the property is.
Yeah, that I don't either.
I, I don't understand how it's germane to this. Doesn't matter if it's LLC, what other roles that individual has. I don't think it's really material to our decision, so.
That it, yeah, it, I, I believe it can't be per law.
I don't know that it can't be, but I don't know how it would be.
Yeah, it shouldn't be. Morally, it should not be.
You're discussing a land use issue, not a ownership issue.
And anybody can come and build in our wonderful city, like.
Yeah, we don't have any limitations on who can come and build.
No, it's not, and it's really not.
They still pay their tax dollars.
That's right.
And they still.
And what if they came and built something that we actually like?
I mean, as far.
Hey, that's a cool restaurant or hey, that's a cool store.
Exactly.
So long as an LLC is paying their fees to the state of Oklahoma.
There you go.
They can come in and build.
We welcome.
We welcome all.
Yes.
I would just like that, I think it's important to realize that the developer property owner had acknowledged what the city council had and took the time and effort to come up with an alternative plan.
Yes.
Right? And, you know, it, just because it was a no last time, you know, doesn't mean it's going to be a no the next time, especially when they've made changes. And we've seen that in previous meetings where we had developers willing to pay for a street light, which costs $375,000. So those types of things and investments within the city, I think, are also important to acknowledge in, in state. So, uh, I just thought I'd call that out.
And we also have to judge each application on its own merits.
Yes.
Not in relation to what we did previously with something completely different with so many characteristics. So, um, just be, you're right, just because we denied somebody or somebody else got denied, doesn't mean we have to deny this one.
Yes.
You're not held to precedent like a court would be, so.
I got one other item and it, yeah, I watched the council meetings. And one of the things that came up, I talked to Rocky about this, is the zoning ordinance update. It was asked to delay again. Do you want to touch on what's going on with that? Because I know what the planning commissioner approved of it quite a while ago.
Give that thing a go.
And you don't need to go into detail unless you want to.
I'll give you all the information that I have at this time. Uh, so last council meeting, we did, uh, ask for a 30 to 60 day extension on the zoning ordinance. We are in the process of trying to schedule a special meeting with the city council to go over what those changes are. And then based on whatever feedback or recommendation they have, we will look into those issues and update it again, um, then set it forth for their adoption. So, um, right now, we're having a hard time coordinating everybody's schedules to find out, pick a date. So accommodate everybody's schedules to have a special meeting, but that's where we're at right now.
Will you be able to provide us kind of what those items are? I mean, are they administrative type or?
Yeah. Or is it something that would change?
For what their changes, for what their.
For what's, I know they're not, they're not lot changes or frontages or anything.
That's why we're going to have the special meeting, yeah, but we want to see what, what their recommendations are.
Because we worked on that for a long time as a committee.
So what that's what we're going to do is present what you guys have worked on. And then based on that special meeting, if they have any feedback from there, we'll reevaluate at that time.
And I think we could say, uh, if there are substantial changes, um, council would want it to come back before planning commission.
I would agree.
So if substantial changes happen, if they're more administrative and that kind of stuff, um, probably not. But if something significant changes, we'll let you guys know and we'll, um, act appropriately.
Of course, significant or substantial could be, you know, what's in the eye of the holder on that one. There's judgment call, so.
Hey, and any information about the New Orleans Square Committee who was looking at that?
Yes, so we are meeting, the first meeting will be Monday, the 29th.
Did you not get an email?
Mm-mm.
Yeah, I did.
I didn't get notification.
I should have, we should have.
So that might be why you guys aren't responding.
That could be. Okay, so did you send them to their city of Broken Arrow?
Well, the city manager, did you get the city manager's email?
No.
Like, um, three weeks ago, a month ago?
No.
Wow. So he created a New Orleans Square email address, so he didn't answer.
Yeah, he may also be using their city of Broken Arrow emails. He shouldn't, he should know, but we have no access to those.
Okay.
Well, if, if something had come in through those, I would have seen it.
Yeah.
Well, can you make it 29th at 5:30 right here?
Well, actually, I'm in, um, New York Monday.
It's like herding cats sometimes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I will look at that.
I'm in, I'm in New York.
It's Monday here at 5:30?
Yes.
Okay.
Glad you asked.
Yeah, me too. Thank you, Mindy. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, appreciate it. I'll definitely get you added and I'll send it out, I'll resend it to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything further?